Have to look for directions.
I'm sure it's the frost.
The crack.
It was one part of the kitchen that's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Ditching up into there.
Silver.
Post-match.
City.
City. Guess a lot like.
Fill your service.
Support.
But, uh. Are you ever here? He said Jan wasn't coming in Jan's. Don't see any of Rick is not.
Melissa.
Daniel.
Yeah.
Casey.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
Same.
Up to you. You. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
New year. We're gonna do. Near here. Gather here. For two things tonight. What's up? First, pick them all. Golf course enhancement update. It's work session tonight. Okay? Typically, what we would do is typically the only, um. Topic for the main topic for this meeting in January is to work on our goals for the following year, coming here. We've gone through process similar to this with, um. In determining the, um, C I P. Recommendation for last year, and so this would be the next step, taking that one step further and starting to take some tasks down there. To support those. But first, we're going to talk about pickleball. Pickleball or pickleball, whichever you prefer. One to. This is a, a, a turnover to Adam, but. In the last couple of months, we've had some subgroups working on different work streams concurrently, okay? So Gordy's been running with the, um. The clubhouse enhancement piece and a couple of other pieces at the physical golf course. And working with Josh on that, Josh is involved in a lot of this. You guys have been working on pickleball slash rink piece of it. And, um. Josh and Adam with staff, thanks staff, they've been doing a lot of other work on this, including like grant application around this. So the purpose of tonight is to bring those work streams back together. This is kind of a toll gate for all that work that's been happening. Ahead of, um. Two open houses over the next, uh, over this month to talk about this.
Can you remind me when?
Open house next Tuesday and then the twenty.
Twenty-four.
Fourth. Same, six P M. in here.
And it's the same format as the tent. It's not a building off of that last one.
Yeah.
If you missed the tent, you can come on.
Yeah, it's. It's not the one or the other, but it's pretty good to vote. So this is, like I said, this is kind of coming together and sharing at the commission level now. What, what all, all of the work has been, been doing, or been happening? And then next week, we'll get a lot of feedback input from citizens and the community and so forth. So at this point, we're not. We don't, we're not gonna ask for a recommendation, knowing, you know, that's not what we're, what the purposes of tonight is mostly to inform. Once we, um, get this information, have a chance to start to ask questions tonight. Continue to ask questions over the next month or so, continuing to get the feedback in from the community. Then we can start as a commission to deliberate and to, uh, to form kind of our. Our recommendation. Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay. You go ahead.
Do my slides please Josh?
Um, so you shall have a, an item from me. Uh, the point of my, uh, briefing to all is, um, over the course of twenty twenty-two, um, there were two contractor or consultant, uh, led efforts, uh, that, uh, that staff worked on with consultants. Uh, one was looking at the potential kitchen upgrade, uh, and the second was, uh, we changed the name of it several times, but pickleball, ice rink, golf course enhancements, um, study. I then broke actually broke it into three groups, um, because when we went out for the, what we called feasibility study for the, uh, pickleball and ice rink, uh, amenities at the, um. Golf course, I also asked a consultant at that time to say, on the original master plan for the golf course in twenty seventeen, uh, to look at a couple of the amenities that were coming up on the C I P, uh, in the near term, and ask them to relook those and give us, you know. What's going on in with pricing and that sort of thing for those, those kinds of things. And, and those, uh, those three main things for that were, uh, uh, resurfacing of the, um, the upper parking lot, uh, which would have included asphalt and, and marking, um, uh, provision of a. Picnic, uh, shelter and the provision of a gas run fire pit. Seat area. That's kind of what we, we looked at, so, um.
In case you're not.
Yeah, alright.
Just a clarification, the parking lot, the lower parking lot was also on the C I P of all of them.
We have had the lower parking lot as a, an in-house project we've been working on for a while within the state, within the public works, uh, trying to expand it when we had materials available.
Okay, so that's, those are two things, the master plan items, I would, I would, there's really two different parking lots we're talking about there.
Right, but when I had on the C I P, just for, when it says parking lot, that's the upper parking lot.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Or the main parking lot, or the one next to the clubhouse. Um, so kitchen upgrade, that's actually from a while ago, we started that in the spring, um, and that was, the purpose was to look at options for expanding the kitchen in the clubhouse to, in order to provide a wider selection of food offerings. Uh, pickleball, we already covered, and then master plan items, yeah, there, so. Um, I just included this map, uh, I know when we were talking about this with one subcommittees and there was some question about where are all these things? So we'll get to particulars, uh, but that's the picture of the golf course, Orno Ochoer, uh, road there on the, uh, east side. The, uh, parking, main parking lot, clubhouse, uh, there in the lower right corner. And so just south of the existing parking lot, you see a small circle and a small rectangle, those are the approximate locations of picnic shelter and fire pit, fire pit being the circle, picnic shelter being the, uh, rectangle. Um, as far as location that rectangle, the idea would be, we, several years ago, as part of the master plan, we leveled out a spot there, which we've been using for fest tents and that sort of thing for when people want to do gatherings. There's, um, been some grills and some picnic tables up there for a while, so basically that same site. And the, uh, fire pit location that we've always talked about is off that into the parking lot somewhere, um, so that it could be, could be both a facility for, um, people after golf type thing, uh, maybe in the fall, spring type deal, but it's also positioned for sledding, um, in the winter time. The larger oval just to the north, uh, that is the proposed location, uh, for, uh, potential pickleball ice rink. And then, um, the, the blue square in the far north or top of the map, uh, is the approximate location of the new, um, maintenance facility. Provision of pickleball and ice rink at the location shown, which is basically the only place we could put it on this site. Um, preclude, uh, means we need to move our maintenance facility, uh, from one place to another, which is not actually a bad thing operationally, our maintenance facility is not well located, uh, for any golfers to use the golf course, uh, you know. That you come off the last hole and you have to go past all our maintenance equipment sitting there, um, so we can add the number. For a number of years, uh, I know I've entertained complaints about locate for that means. Uh, next slide please. Um, so on the kitchen upgrade, uh, the architect who did the consulting work for us, um, came up with two initial, uh, options, option A, option B, um, you can kind of see the floor plans there. In general, um, th- there's slight differences, the parts of the building you're seeing there on the, on the bottom part of the building, that's, uh, kind of where the existing, uh, retail, uh, counter is, you know, where you come to pay for rounds and things like that. The part on the top of the, each of those, uh, drawings is, uh, where the existing kitchen and, I don't know, we call it an office, but the closet office space that's just off from there, um, and then the stairs going up and down in the middle there. Um, so a couple of deep, uh, variations, again, one thing when we look at this kitchen upgrade, just to keep in mind is what we were looking at, what we asked to evaluate was getting to the, to the right level to meet all the codes that we would need, uh, to meet, uh, to enhance our, our food operations to provide things like hot dogs, popcorn, uh, pizzas, uh, those sorts of things. These don't include like, uh, uh, there's no grill, deep fryer type of thing, so we're talking ovens, hot dog rollers, those kind of things. Regardless though, there's a requirement, rightly so for health, then there's a certain amount of cleanup and prep area that you need to have regardless, so a lot of, um, a lot of the effort would go into providing spaces for all those kind of things, having the right number of sinks and. Square footage of prep area. Um, there was another, there's another smaller part of this, it's not shown on here, there were some proposals also about some amenities in the, not amenities, but supporting equipment, um, in the basement of the building, um, to support some of the color upstairs. So option A, option B, that's kind of.
And neither, neither of those are involved moving any walls.
Correct, this is all internal.
All is, the only really structural change is to take out a door and to move the countertop.
Right.
One of the significant differences here, I see the counter difference, but the equipment things, but.
Main difference is this one, they utilize that front, uh, concession or checkout area, um, that becomes more of a serving station, a lot, a lot more of the. The hot dog roller, popcorn machine, they're all front, so requires.
See if you interact with it.
It's available. And then the option B, you see most of that stuff is in the kitchen or in the, uh, right, former office space. Um, in your packet, uh, the, uh, the costs associated, uh, with those, uh, the lower, they're, they're pretty close to each other, uh, the, uh, the detail sheets are in the appendix. When you see my number in there, I have, uh, three, three hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred sixty-two, that, uh, is the price provided for construction, uh, with a multiplier of twenty percent for contingencies and soft costs, um, which I added in there because we would have to pay an architect to do the final designs, uh, pay somebody to project manage it, all that sort of stuff. Um, as well as have a little bit of buffer, because anybody who's done a remodel in their house knows it never goes exactly, exactly the way you expect it to go.
So what, what would, I mean. What, what, do you know what the incremental cost or feasibility would be to go beyond this and offer grill, hood system, so on and so forth?
We don't know, that was beyond what we asked for here, but. I think to provide any of those kind of facilities, we're, we're probably talking about an addition or a, or a more major remodel of the building where we're moving.
It's always inadequate for that.
Yeah, yeah, and you, it just, it just takes up space and then.
Wondering.
I don't, I don't know fully, but there's fire, fire code stuff and some.
It's pretty expensive generally, which is normal for a kitchen, but.
And not jumping in too hard, you see in here, the staff recommendation is we hold on this, we're not, uh, we think it was a good exercise to go through, but at this point, we, we would, as staff, I would not recommend moving forward on this at these prices.
I thought that was a buffer.
Yeah, I think so maybe, but.
There's definitely sticker shock with it, and part of it is, it's a really.
Right.
It's, yeah, but it's a small space and, um, a lot of it has to do with just the age of the building, I mean, any time you have plumbing, electrical, the second, one thing, it just opens up the small.
I'm not surprised by the cost, I'm just wondering if that's a. You know, if it's, if it's a medium point that's not getting the value, and it's either you do less or you do way more, and those are both better value propositions potentially.
And we have not, uh, we haven't, at least sadly, we haven't gone through a cost benefit analysis or anything like that. How many hot dogs do we have to sell to?
If you can have an actual restaurant kind of food, that's worth double the cost or thirty percent more, whatever it might be, or you stick with the candy and popcorn.
And, yeah, and or, you know, at some point, is, do we out, have we outrun the clubhouse as it is?
The, the initial guidance we got on cost was about a third of this, and so just kind of back in the envelope, we're like, we could probably justify this. Yeah, with the, the cost benefit might actually prove out for this.
And like the equipment itself is like, you know, forty to sixty grand of this whole thing, which is crazy, so we're still.
So I'm trying to add up, like, where did all the rest of it come from?
It's a lot of it's just labor, you know, because it's general conditions.
Cost of the cost.
Cost of the cost, yeah, it's a lot of electrical and plumbing, so, um, I haven't caught up with you guys on this in a, in a few weeks, but where we, where I thought we left off, part of this was looking at potentially, you know, putting forth a little more effort and how far can we scale it back? If we were justified, but like, what is the absolute bare bones minimum? I don't think we've fully gone on that path.
So I did have an opportunity to meet with one contractor and really even at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars, I thought that'd be a stretch to, to get as much of this done as possible. I do think there are cost-saving opportunities within that, but it's just tough right now.
Yeah, you guys, Adam, you mentioned more experimenting with demand a little bit, with maybe food truck days or things like.
That's what, that's, you know, we've talked about food trucks for a couple of years now, what, what we thought after seeing this is maybe we make a concerted effort over yes, next year. Targets and particular days, even if we have to, um, words not right, underwrite's not the right word, but do the guarantee minimums and things like that, uh, for a couple of food trucks and see if, you know, creating something like that creates the demand and then. Oh, well, if, if it does, then maybe generate some.
Maybe it's worth it.
Yeah, maybe it's worth it at that point, or, or maybe, you know, the, like, uh, a place in, um, um, Spring Park Brewery, you know, they, they do, they do a great thing with the, the whole food truck. I don't think we're, we're a place that guarantees two thousand dollars and, well, one of them was like two thousand dollars an hour, but we might, you know, be able to get a hot dog truck or a pizza truck or something.
Support an event. If there was even like some kind of partnership of like, oh, you're gonna get the brewery on Tuesday, if you want to come to the golf course on Monday, we have a, we have a leak or something, just leave the truck here overnight, you know, if there's some, you know.
Right.
Experiment.
So Josh has kind of tasked him, uh, from, from golf, the clubhouse, of looking into those and starting to find out who our vendors might be, uh, and then we can, we can do some of that over the next year, so.
Do we, you had an amazing idea, we toured the Wazeta Beach place, uh, that was the owner of Red Rooster, like, do we know how much that cost for him to outfit? Like, it's, would he have sticker shock of three hundred grand or, you know, would he be like?
Probably, yeah, yeah.
I feel like he didn't expect three hundred grand on that, like, there's.
No, I think.
There's. If you're starting from nothing and you've got electrical and plumbing that's sufficient, so you, then, you know, part of this is just working with what we have there, which is.
They were able to put grill in there, even though it's a super tiny space, smaller than this table.
Yeah.
I don't know what across the city subsidizes some of that, but the city takes their portion of their revenue, they only do about thirty or forty grand a year there in revenue.
Yeah, I was just gonna say. Yeah, like their general conditions are fifty grand, the fees twenty-five grand, you've got thirty-five grand contingencies, you know, and then it's like equipment sixty grand. Plumbing and electrical are twenty each, so.
If you compare it to like a beach site, you'd spend three hundred grand, so generating thirty grand a year, that's a little.
Yeah.
That's cute, but.
And this is, yeah, so if you're trying to chew on this thing, to, to a, to a building that was built as a residential building in the nineteen twenties, um, you know, you're still, you go in the attic and you still see the not tube wiring, I mean, it's not used anymore, but it's still up there.
Yeah.
So it's, the building was not envisioned to do this, so, so it's gonna cost us to make it that way. Anyway, we're, we're headed to move on to the next. Uh, so the next, uh, the next topic, uh, pickleball and ice rink, uh, we, uh, we consulted with Holtly May, uh, our engineering consulting firm, uh, to do some landscape architect work and give us, uh, some, uh, some diagrams. So, you know, bottom line was to look at, is it feasible, the point of the study, is it feasible to fit pickleball, ice rink type facility and everything that kind of goes with it at our golf course? Uh, and the simple answer is yes, uh, it, it fits, it works, it's kind of in keeping with, uh, actually it's a good fit with some of the things that we've been talking about at the golf course as far as diversifying, uh, you know, all season facility, all that kind of stuff, uh. So it, it does fit, uh, the biggest challenges you see when we get to it is the numbers, uh, the cost to do so. So, you know, a couple of things about the site, as, as you see it there, um, the parking lot piece is, uh, right where the dirt park, lower dirt parking lot is now, um, obviously it's expanded and we would, we would look to pave it in some way. Um, the ice rink slash pickleball, um, site there is, um, is, sits right where the maintenance shed is, you can see the existing walkway, uh, or cartway that comes down there now, um, and a little bit further. The, uh, the nice thing, uh, again about this option is it fits well into the space, it's reasonably flat, there's some earthwork to do, uh, to get it to, you know, perfectly flat, um, but it's, uh, it's not super extensive. The biggest drawback on the site is it does require the moving of the maintenance, um, the main, the existing maintenance facility.
Which stalls are those, additional stalls or are those, does it include the existing lower lot there?
That is the existing lower lot.
Okay, just pay.
So what's the, what's the.
And it's a little bit, it's a little bit expanded, a little bit, uh, the existing lot, I don't know, it's just a dirt.
You might get twelve down there.
Right now, so we're kind of getting in that eight.
And I think, and again, this is, I just wanted to say, this is a feasibility study level drawing, I don't know that the parking lot will be curved like that, it might be rectangular, you know, those are things you would look out in detail design, we, are we able to squeak a couple more, uh, parking, uh, parking spots out, you know, all that kind of stuff, this stuff we would, uh, still work on. The point of this, again, exercise is to show that it's feasible and then be able to come up with some rough order of magnitude costs that are associated with that.
Yeah, this is, this is concept, early on, this isn't really a design, there's a lot of more work to do before that.
The, uh, the way it's outlined there, uh, this, uh, does, uh, provide a, a spot for, uh, five pickleball courts and a somewhat smaller, uh, than regulation hockey rink. We did, uh, we had talked to U-Hockey, uh, perfectly, uh, fine with this size. The other thing about the site is there is, uh, there is a little bit of ability to expand, you know, if we, you know, right now we're showing five pickleball courts on there, we could get six on the site. If we, if we didn't have the funding, you could do four and have a little bit shorter, uh, rink slash, uh.
What about general skating, is there anywhere where you could add a, a big area, but every rink I can think of has, you know, clap break or hole break, they've got a large general skating area and then boards, so that if you have a team practicing or, you know, older kids playing, you can't even, there's a place for the younger kids to skate.
We don't, we didn't necessarily put that into this concept we have, we, you know, we do something like that now down at the, um, the Casco Point Rink where, you know, we kind of put boards on, you know, a portion of what was the existing rink there, and so you could have both, um. You know, we're getting a little bad stuff, but, you know, depending on how something like this will be funded, um, you know, we, we would have some kind of scheme where there are certain times that, uh, you know, it's reservable for, um, you know, practices and things like that, and certain periods of time, uh, where it's available for, you know, just the public for free skate type things, so.
Is it, does the topography lend itself, is it flat enough there where you could get an area or is it, I know it's generally a very hilly property, but is there?
This right through here would be your flats area, um. I think you'd take quite a bit of work to make, to contain it, though you'd have to burn up around it or put some type of barrier and, uh, you know, making that small area, whatever would be worth it.
And it might, you know, there might be, there might be scenarios where if, uh, if we couldn't fund, uh, the longer ice rink, uh, we'd have a shorter one, but we would probably still do mostly earthwork for whatever the optimal size thing was there, so you could expand into it and, you know, that might be a.
What are the dimensions of this concept?
Um.
What, sixty by sixty five?
Yeah.
Sixty five.
Yep, and you should have copies in your packet too, one of those sorts of things.
That's a pretty good sized ice rink, it's bigger than Casco, I think Casco's.
Casco is forty by eighty.
Yeah, it's not big.
Thirty-five by eighty.
This is significantly larger.
But this is not a standard size.
It is not, it is not an Olympic or, um, N H L.
Also that's two hundred.
So, uh, you see there in cost estimate, uh, I had hockey rink pickleballs at, uh, six hundred and forty thousand, uh, maintenance facility moved is at one ninety, um. We, we actually think we can do maintenance facility even cheaper, um, but I've left conservative numbers on all these.
You're going through that number, I, that number jumped out at me as being optimistic, I don't know if I just, I don't, which one, the maintenance, the new maintenance facility.
Well, so we're looking, so what we would, we would propose putting in there is a simple hole barn, uh, like a type facility, um. Yeah.
In a much smaller heated portion than what we currently have, so the rest would just be gravel or dirt floor for cold storage for the.
Because mostly, you know, for the needs of actually golf course and park maintenance equipment, you know, we mostly need to be able to secure the motors and other support equipment and have a small area where, when we need to do, uh, maintenance on that equipment at the site, we can do it, otherwise, you know. The way we work now is most of the annual maintenance stuff, we, we bring the equipment back here to public works where we have all the, the mechanic and all the tools to do it. So, yeah, we're looking at a, at a much smaller site and also, uh, just using the existing, uh, that site's already pretty much level, graded, has some gravel, what have you, so we're talking minor, minor improvements to the land, um, it's really the provision of, uh, putting in a, uh, putting in a pole barn type structure. And we want to make it decorative, so it fit the, uh, fit the landscape and everything.
That's what my question was, and so, simple ball barn, can you make it look like a nice simple ball barn?
Yeah, we'd pay maybe a little more to make it, you know, look more like a, I don't know, agricultural barn.
Is it metal?
I think that's what we're, that's what we're using right now.
For, that's the, yeah, metal.
Yeah, metal, metal ball barn, small story.
What color is?
No colors chosen. But, you know, kind of longer, a little bit narrower, um, to the way that you would park the equipment.
And you're not going to park it as well, this also gains four parking spots, where staff would park two.
Yeah, that allows us to keep all our maintenance staff out of, uh.
And what about just, uh, from an operations standpoint, of course, having maintenance away from the clubhouse, I mean, Josh, from your standpoint, is there drawbacks to that with not having those too close together?
No, I think it's, it's not an issue being away from the clubhouse, um, we do have a lot of issues down, um, near the pond with vandalism, carts going into the pond, so I like the idea of having a building closer to it, I think that makes people think twice about what they're doing. That also gets us closer to the pot irrigation clubhouse, which is notoriously faulty, uh, so the closer we can be to that, the better, uh, I don't really see any issues being that far away from the clubhouse, and it's really not that far away.
Is it, is it a benefit, like, or?
I think it is, it gets us farther away, um. From, from the action that's happening right there in the morning, so I think it's good for us.
Right now, there's a lot of storage outside of the maintenance shed, you know, be it as, yeah, pumps or just other equipment, with that all being contained, would there be things that are stuffed?
Some of the equipment that's sitting outside right now is actually in the process of replacing this next year, so by springtime, a lot of that's going away regardless of the location of the building, um, so no, I mean, apart from the fuel cubes, we wouldn't have anything stored outside, we'd have sufficient space inside for cold storage.
Yeah, this is part of the idea too, is, if we're gonna, if we were gonna make these kind of investments, we're gonna clean it up. I, I, and I think, you know, the art, the other advantage is just operationally too, and how the course runs of the golf course, we get that maintenance stuff away from, you know, being right in the middle of where all the patrons are trying to play golf and do all that kind of stuff. And we put all the recreational facilities there, the clubhouse, and then we get a separate entrance, drive entrance for, uh, maintenance, which is not, I mean, if you think about, um, you know, Wazeta or Woodhill, you know, all their maintenance facilities are offset from where they're in, um, activity centers, clubhouse is one of them, so.
Were there any trade-offs?
And interestingly, this used to be where, uh, in the vicinity of here is where the original clubhouse was.
Yeah, I've seen photos of that, yeah.
This is, used to be about here, right there is where you would go get, uh, pay your, pay your fee for your car.
And the, the current clubhouse is where he lived.
Correct.
So I think we live in a separate clubhouse.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, club, uh, club shack, I think.
That's the, that's the family home. Well, I remember being the family guy, I realized. Yeah, there's some cool stories of, of the clubhouse that used to exist here, they have parking there. Before there was a clubhouse.
Which is why you have part of risen, that whole area is already level, it's got gravel underneath, there's some of this grass, you know, but there's gravel and everything under it. It's been used for, oh, it's used for decades.
Seen.
Well, I'm not related to the chef, but I was thinking about when you were talking about cleaning up that area that it's currently at, and I was thinking about where you put the fire pit and the shelter. And I understand it's close to where you do the, uh, sledding now. Seems like it's a fair distance from where you're putting ice skating. Is there a reason why it's over there other than the sledding? Have you, have you considered whether they ought to be more?
They could be, um, the reason it's, it was originally there, it was originally, uh, anticipated or contemplated in the, um, master plan twenty seventeen was to support sledding. And that was, one of the, the drivers was back then and as today, I guess, is how do we, how do we make that course that park, uh, a year round facility that's got the first uses? We keep it, um, keep it, and make it as useful for, uh, residents as possible. Um, so that's why it's there. Could there be some kind of a warning feature, um, down, um, by the ice rink? Certainly. Um, it's just, I think it's just money, um, but, uh, yeah, you could do something like that. I guess the other advantage for it being, um, there is it's relatively close to where our existing natural gas lines and stuff are, we just try and shelter the, under the parking lot.
I think it's just summer shelter relative to the pickleball, but you don't have any kind of shelter or seating area.
For pickleball.
Cause you're always gonna have overflow.
We do have some seating, but we did, if you want to go in, we'll see that. Uh, so we did template, uh, there you can kind of see.
Black.
The little black things are supposed to be, you know, potential benches. And again, this is, this is a concept, so, you know, could that, could that be some little covered tables or something? Certainly. Could there be a little fire pit down there, um, next to the ice rink? Um, I'm trying to think of where my kid used to skate, there's, Minnetonka or somewhere has an outdoor rink and there's a little elongated fire thing.
Why is that a symbol?
Yeah, okay.
So if one of the kids would put their skates on, too, use an ambulance or benches.
Yeah, I think that's kind of, I guess, so, you know, there's probably a good case for, if we got into detailed design on this, would some of those be at least a three sided shelter sometimes? That kind of, yeah, probably.
I think it's nice up at the top of the hill aesthetically, it's a pretty spot, you can see out, you know, there's a shelter and a fire pit. On the other hand, down there, it might, like you said, it might, um, go better with the activities, also it's less windy down there. Up on the top of the ridge, it's quite windy.
And you're getting a shelter.
Cause you're having a shelter and a fire pit, winds on.
The other, the other reason is that the top, uh, just again, uh, was looking at golfers too, is cause people kind of, for historically hung, hung out up there. Um, and so it was.
Yeah, it's a pretty spot.
But, yeah, rather than, uh, broken down grills and stuff like that, let's give them a fire pit and sit around if that's, you know, might not want to run it in July, but, you know, the seating area and everything, still need to, you know, to, for people to gather, so. But again, that doesn't necessarily preclude something that both sides of that's what we want. So.
Okay, go ahead, sorry. No, you can continue, I'll pass later.
Okay, um, can you even drop down? And then finally, again, those golf course master plan items, uh, refresh, it's just the image, um, showing, again, a picnic shelter, um, basically where the flat spot where you could put a, put tents up today and then, uh, that fire pit. And we played with different iterations on the location of that fire pit too, even in some of the earlier drafts, like, should, should there be a longer trail and it be closer to where the sledding and that is? Or should it be closer to the parking lot, um, you know? Again, those, the, those are some things that if we, if we decide that we're gonna move forward with this, we'll.
Is it gas fire pit or wood?
We were looking at gas so that we can control it.
Whoa, 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 where's the Christmas tree? Where's the tree? Is that there?
The end of the fire pit, right there, that little.
It's on fire.
That little top.
Yeah.
That, that has to.
It was right after it was cut, yeah.
Do you gain any parking with the resurfacing?
Um, I think we do in, uh, we're not gaining parking, we're not gaining space the way we have it proposed right now, but we would strike. Um, and I think that will provide us some efficiency with parking. Um, anytime you strike, then people start parking closer, you know, it's not just first guy parks all catatomus and then ruin it for the rest of the day, um, type of thing, so, yeah. I think, I think we do, we, we didn't count that as a.
Now, how long have we heard golf operations use both parking lots?
So the upper parking lot is used first, um, we're pretty quiet in the mornings, we only have two or three people first thing in the morning. Uh, the lower parking lot fills up for the week nights, so Tuesday and Thursdays, well, mainly just Tuesdays we receive the busiest night. So both of those parking lots are crucial.
Remind me, is that the numbers, rough numbers of the parking lots?
Uh, twenty stalls on the lower slot, spot, this, or lower lot is what's being shown in the drawing.
It's really dependent on what we get. Are you asking what we have currently or what we could get?
Just what's, what's in the scope of this concept? I mean, just roughly, it'd be about forty, fifty total?
Yeah.
Like, there's not like twenty-seven up there?
Okay, so twenty lower, thirty, uh, you know, something like that. And, Josh, how many other, I know when you have the, the junior events there, but there's, I mean, parking is totally full. Are there other, and there, there was like two of those last summer, are there other events that, that are hosted there where all parking gets gobbled up?
Is that appreciated?
Yeah. There really aren't too many days where it's full. It really is the league, during league play is when we see it at its fullest. We have the two junior events, we are looking to add a junior league this year, so that may have an impact on parking. Um, as, I'm sure parents would just wait for their kids to play, um, I'm not sure.
And what about just peak, um, like weekend, the Saturdays and Friday noon, Saturdays as a kid?
Yeah, so Friday morning is when we start picking up, uh, we are, I would say, upper parking lot is max capacity. The lower lot never reaches that for the weekend, but it does get close.
And saying, when do you, on, on pickleball, when do you foresee that getting highest usage?
Well, generally speaking, it's that, you know, eight to eleven in the morning time slot.
When we days?
Yeah, there's a lot of people playing on Saturdays and Sundays now in the mornings, so, um, but you can control it with the lights. If you, if you don't put the lights on at night, you're not gonna have people playing, so I think you can control that.
Good to survey where the pickleball players, just different events, uh, almost majorities that morning. We asked them to play between eight noon and five, five, and that's majority for each. Um, is, we've talked, we've talked about the lower parking lot for a while as being an enabler for us to get, and the picnic shelter is an enabler to have more corporate type of events too. So just, I think that.
Yeah, so if there are no questions, just kind of the last, uh, so, again, costs, uh, we did, uh, cost updates on the, um, on the, uh, the rink and, uh, oh, sorry, on the fire pit and picnic shelter, um, so we're looking around one hundred and thirteen for a picnic shelter, uh, based, uh, those costs, um, off of a recent, um, building and picnic shelter out on Big Island, less the transportation cost. Um, that is a, and that is, we're showing a picnic shelter with concrete, um, pad as opposed to one over this gravel, so.
But that was a lot bigger than, than we're proposing here, right?
A little bit bigger, but not, not massive.
How big is it?
Says.
Twenty-five by fifty.
So it's pretty big. Um, and fire ring, um, that one can be very, is, is pretty varied depending on what kind of, you know, what kind of meeting and things you do.
Thirty drum?
Say it.
Thirty diameter drum?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Um.
You're an expert.
I am.
Recent purchaser?
Yes, yeah, it's, wait, the one at our house is, our landscaper went to town, I was like, that's too big, that's too big, and he was right, it's, it's, it's about twenty-five feet and I thought it was crazy and, uh, it functions quite well for ten, twelve people.
So could we just skip this one, go to your round?
Yeah, if you keep the course, just make a path through the. Um, so, uh, so then, so I, in the document, you give a variety of costs there. And so, again, kind of to come back, all is in feasible, um, the biggest challenge is funding. Um, so one of the things, uh, I point out in here is, uh, we have done a lot of projects, uh, in our parks, uh, and spent a lot of our park money. Um, and so right now, uh, finance is projecting, uh, we'll, we've got about fifty thousand, um, available for twenty twenty-three projects in the parks funding. And just, uh, it's not in this report, but, you know, one of the main priorities I think you're gonna talk about in the second part of this meeting is, you know, getting after the Hackberry Park Master Plan, uh, which we really need to be doing in twenty-three, so some of those resources should go to that. That said, uh, there, there are some other funding streams within the city, uh, that, that may be available, they are all subject to city council approval. Um, and I have not pitched these yet to the city council, so they're purely my recommendations of where we might find some, uh, money. And that is, uh, one source is our community investment fund, uh, which is a fund that we have, um, for community level projects, which this will be. Um, and so I've, I've put a couple of things down in the funding paragraph where those money comes. But even with that, the vast majority of any of these projects has to come from some outside funding. Um, so in order, uh, to get a, to get a, a leap start on some of that, we did, uh, when the, when the Hennepin County Sports Grant opportunity, Facilities Grant opportunity, uh, came up this last fall, we did put in a grant application for that, um, asking for two hundred thousand. Um, it requires a match, uh, from somewhere, which could be donations, um, and city funds or a combination thereof. Um, just as a, uh, last time we used and got that grant, it was when we did the deal with, uh, soccer field, uh, I think we asked for two hundred, then two, we got a hundred and fifty or something like that in that grant, so, although we asked for two hundred, I wouldn't necessarily, if we get anything, I wouldn't necessarily expect it to be everything we asked for, but it would be part of.
And correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the initial site would be in March that released?
Yeah, when they release the results.
Before we would find out.
So you don't, that's a, end of, assume March, so you probably wouldn't get going on fundraising until you knew you have that piece, right?
Well, maybe, it depends.
Yeah.
Um, and that's part of the, the point here is, um, and then so the rest of it, you know, I just split it down in the middle, I said, well, okay, if you really want to do the, the rink thing, what have you, um, you know, the, the hockey association and their donors are gonna have to come up with two hundred and thirty-four thousand and the pickleball people are gonna have to come up with two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Cause, cause it's gonna be split away, you know, not necessarily, but for the sake of starting somewhere, um, that's what, what we want to do. The other thing that cons, that we have to consider, um, and just I want to make a point, is we've talked in this forum and also at the city council about the fact that twenty twenty-four is the hundredth anniversary of the golf course and therefore we kind of want to avoid construction, uh, at the park that year, um, because just wouldn't be a good, a good fit, so. You know, a couple of options here is if you're gonna try to crunch and do any of this stuff in twenty twenty-three, then there's some, uh, groups, some partners out there that need to be fundraising now. Um, or, uh, you know, we look and say, oh, this is a twenty twenty-five, uh, and beyond, these are twenty twenty-five, maybe on project, and maybe a combination, right? I don't know, um, so.
But I think that with the funding, with the, with the grant funding, you'd have to reapply for that, right? Say we had a, was it a two?
It's usually a two year window to use it.
Oh, okay.
Um, the, the good news is, so say you, uh, say, say we said, uh, so we didn't get it, we can apply for it again, it's the annual grant that we apply.
Think so, there's a spring and fall.
No, that's for the, um, that's for the, sorry, that's equipment and playground grants are twice, twice a year. The facilities grants, which are the bigger ones, those are once a year in the fall.
Yeah.
We, you know, we're in the sprays, so.
But I think it also speaks to the four versus six relative size. So maybe you do the fundraising without the expectation that we would get money, and if the money comes through, then you expand it, you know? So you do the fundraising as if you're gonna do four and not gonna have the funding from the youth sports grant.
Four, okay.
Right? And, and that way, fundraising you do, you can commit to a minimum size of this, but we have to know, you know, what that looks like, right? And then, to the extent you don't really break ground until after March, April anyway, right? It's gonna be summer. In the meantime, you find out about the grant, if it comes through, now you can do the full size. So I, I mean, I think you have to figure out whether or not that's a scenario.
And so I did throw in here also just a, a, a sample timeline of that kind of thing, you know, so, assume, you know, the worst case scenario, or at least the worst case for staff is you tell us you want to do this in twenty twenty-three, um, because that's, that's crunch. Um, you know, so if we wanted to be, you, these won't, these probably won't take a great deal of construction time, um, but, you know, if we want to be done by November of next year, um, you know, we, we need to start at the very beginning of August is my guess, um, if not sooner, sooner is better, um, to do those kind of things. Um, which is maybe backwards from that, we need to, you know, start design, um, you know, I put on timeline here, you know, we, we need to, we need to have a decision of what projects we're gonna design. No later than the beginning of May, so we can get designs turned around and out for bid, receive bids, award, you know, all that kind of stuff. It just takes time to go through those processes.
And when you say August, there's also the, the added cost of lost revenue at the course, I don't know how much money we'd be losing from August, September, but that's a big factor here too.
Well, I don't, I'm thinking, I don't, well, we might lose the tiny, uh, some just people wouldn't, wouldn't be around construction, but, you know, part of the thing is this does have the impact to golf course, the greens and fairways or anything like that.
Oh, so you think you could still operate that?
And if, yeah, and depending on how we phased it, you, you know, pieces.
The other part.
Okay, right, yeah, probably, you know, if, if you were gonna do the, if you were gonna do the ice rink pickleball thing, then, you know, right off the bat, we'd be, um, going down to build the maintenance facility. That's not really gonna impact, uh, course play at all.
Just so we know, that's a reference, if we have to do a phased approach, could we still do the upper parking lot, uh, at the hundred year, like, basically fundraising proposals, that can be completely separate?
Yeah, and I think that, and, and, and here in the stat, one of the stat recommendations is, you know, we've been planning on resurfacing that parking lot for a long time, um, and we have funding, funding streams available to do that without any grants or anything, and we probably should do that just as part of normal maintenance.
Yeah.
It just needs it. And so I would, I would recommend, let's do it before the hundredth anniversary, so it's a facility that we have, um, to support any events or anything like that that we try to do back here.
And remind me, what do we have in the CIP for this year at the golf course?
Um, we have this stuff.
So par, parking lot?
Park, you know, we have all this stuff that we were talking about here is, is listed on the CIP for twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
The challenge is we don't have, although, you know, the CIP is a, is a wish list, we don't have the funding to support that without a vast amount of outside.
So how, or is it, you said we have fifty grand?
Yeah, give or take, yep.
Okay, and what are our, our funding sources outside that for CIP items? Like, if we said we just wanted to do picnic shelter, fire pit and parking lot this year?
So, um, that's, that's what I was talking about, we might be able to use the community investment fund for some of those items. Community investment fund, other items that it adds right now, uh, against it, or planned against it are, in the bar parking lot, uh, which is the parking lot on Harbor Store and the areas and all that. Um, it's a project we have, uh, potentially funding out of that. And then, um, the only other thing that we have, uh, coming out of that fund in the near future is our portion of the highway, or the County Route one twelve project. Uh, we have to pay, um, one of the partnership ones, no, we have to pay half from each of those intersection lights at, uh, at Willow and, uh, Old Crystal Bay when they go in, and we have to pay for any.
It would be really nice.
Huh? They're just expensive.
Which colors are we making for?
Hopefully.
Half of the yellow.
Unfortunately, the cost, whether cost earnings work with accounting, we have two roads, two, two legs and four, uh, coming into those lights, we have to cover that. Unfortunately, the cost, whether the cost earnings work with accounting, we have two roads, two two legs and four uh coming into those lights, we have to cover that. Um as well as uh some of the some of the work for the trail extension and uh any decorative light, old street lights and stuff we do as part of that. So those are the things that that we would be competing for uh in that pot of money, um the good news is uh I originally had uh one twelve planned for uh twenty twenty-three and I've learned from the county that that's gonna be at least twenty twenty-four, so you know, there's time for that to.
So how uh these costs, you mentioned like the one ninety for the. Have you, how? How much have you pressure tested these costs? I mean, how how confident, if you could put a range of confidence around the cost here?
I think all these costs are conservative and and you know, good as far as like wouldn't go beyond that, make sure it wouldn't.
Okay.
Um, are there, I mean, we haven't done any value engineering or any of that kind of stuff to um to whittle down and narrow it down on tighter.
So you have earmarked uh maintenance facility and the parking lot as CIP funded, um.
As CIP funded, you mean?
As CIP funded, yes, so, yeah, sorry, is it the same as CIP? Um, what is the status of the maintenance shed, like, is it decrepit, is it falling down, is it great? Functions as is, like where where are we at that?
It functions.
Oh, no, I've seen it, that's why I'm just like hoping you can articulate it, because I have seen it, but.
We use it, we'll continue to use it, uh it'd be nice to invest a little bit more into something.
This is like part of me is, you know, this is if we're not able to do this in the, before the hundred year anniversary, we're interested in the parking lot and there might be funds available to do the maintenance shed too, is there any, let's say, the community scraps pickleball and hockey, like the way out of right field, we just hear that the community is not interested, is the maintenance shed even on the table then? Like, is it something that like is a need, we would like to do it?
Probably not at that timeline. Personally.
Yeah, probably, it's something who, well, we either be looking at investing in the existing facility, um and then five, and your timeframe, but.
It does beg to, I think, in general, when you're between the maintenance facility and the golf course, starting to think about those things, again, at the end of their life.
Correct.
That's kinda what I was going, yeah.
Thinking about five, ten years from now, it's gonna have to, meaningful investment or replacement needs to happen, how are we gonna pay for that? You know, it may not happen, it's gonna be years, we gotta start thinking about that.
That's kinda what I was getting at previously. Say this doesn't happen in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, or whatever, you know, fundraising or whatever, like, would would the maintenance shed be on the CIP before the hundred anniversary to generally clean up that area anyway, you know, is that something that?
We have, we have, we haven't had that facility on the CIP as a capital investment, we have been expending um operation, maintenance dollars on it. Um, you know, doing, you know, doing things with an electrical campus up in the building, um internal stuff with the staff, you know, okay, you do us jump out of the belt outside for a while and starting to get rid of that kind of stuff and.
I have the city redoing the works facility or looking at the works facility, is doing those two projects in coordination helpful in any way or do they influence each other?
The.
The public works building and the golf course building, like if you're like, oh, if we move this, then maybe we won't do this, but if we don't move this, then we need designated space or, you know, is there any overlap that the city slash park?
No, I I have seen some overlap or link uh just from a construction standpoint of the bar parking lot and the upper parking lot, just because I can bid it as one project and maybe see some um savings on um mobilization, things like that, if I can make a big enough saving project for a work.
Where's the lower parking lot in your processes?
Uh, that is in the pickleball, so um in the numbers for the pickleball, I just go back to. Basically, everything on that slide uh is what we're calling pickleball management, got it, costs.
Right. Alright, so you can see how um, like I said, there's these multiple streams of work have been happening and need to continue to currently happen. It may appear sometimes that we're putting the cart before the horse at some things, but when we have a closing, uh the window closing on this twenty twenty-four, everyone, we don't want construction going on there and other things going on, and we need to, we need to, you know, start fundraising now, like to your to your question earlier, I think we need to start fundraising now, even if we don't know where the um it, what the grant funding will be, and we need to start these pieces, and that's why they move forward on the grant and that kind of stuff, because it's all, that's the core, they come together in this timeline that you put together here, which he's stressing over, you can tell.
I'm not sure, I just, if you wanna do something twenty twenty-three, time is short.
Yeah, and you need to have a contingency plan for, and there's kind of a inflection point of a go-no-go, you're advancing design, moving down the road, what if one of these four funding sources doesn't come in, how do you backfill that? And are you, remember, where you, how do you back out of it?
How do you back out of it, where you left one there, there's there's a lot of, right, there's risk with that, they're not insignificant amounts either. Right, and the council is not taking a vote on this or anything yet, but the the informal feedback I have from some of the council members is, you know, we we're not gonna pull the trigger on detailed design until there's a level of comfort um that we're gonna be getting close to, you know, people um committing to funding of it, um and I think, I think there's in general, as long as it uh, you know, as long as this continues along the path of getting positive feedback from the community and all that, I think the council will support doing these things, but I've heard from individuals on a couple of occasions, as long as the majority of the funding is coming from where the partners are, um on it, so.
So next, so next week is the first, first of two open houses, I think, we're gonna cover, among other things, we're gonna cover the process, what we've done so far, what the process looks like going forward, we're gonna talk about site selection, why, you know, not just the um the golf course location, but you know, what other things, uh what other site selection work did we do that led up to this, or why is that one that we're targeting right now, are there other sites out there that we would, that we would consider, you know, and under what case would that, would that be? And then third, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of, there's been lots of concerns about the design and the impact to to the golf golfing operations, the impact to the neighborhood, the impact to traffic, the that type of stuff and how, you know, and so that's also gonna be included next, next week is, you know, what are the the things that we're trying to accomplish here? Uh, what are we trying to, what what are we trying to mitigate here, or what's on our radar? I think this, I think this is a great start, I thank you guys for doing this, I think, you know, just my little opinion here is that is that if we're going to do something like this in Orno, it needs to fit in in the it needs to fit in kind of the the style and uh the history of Orno, it's not, the objective is not to create a pickleball stadium here, the objective really isn't to solve the the needs for uh the the pickleball community, greater, greater western metro level pickleball community, and I think that I think that this is coming along, I mean, I still have some, I have still have some questions about about just making sure that this fits with the, you know, Orno style, aesthetics and that kind of stuff, but.
I think also the the skating component is important, I mean, it's one of the four, so that's, they got a big seat at the table here. And I know we've had a conversation with them, like just making sure that they're up to speed, we can't make any assumptions on their interest level and like, does this really actually function for them, the way they would expect a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar investment? Is it accomplishing their goals for needed ice time, it seems to me that for association use, you can't really count on this, because it's what, and it's it's fun to have outdoor skating, but they can't like plan games and that kind of stuff outside.
It doesn't solve a huge problem.
Doesn't solve a need for like ice, so it's kind of like, but, you know, they, yeah, but so that's where I was kind of like, with general skating and it does, is it, is it serving a community benefit, if if the if the association is putting in two, you know, quarter million bucks on this thing, they're gonna be like, that's kind of ours, and now how is that benefiting the city and the little kids that wanna go skate, and all of a sudden, bam, team shows up and they're ripping slap shots, and they're like, well.
And that, and we have a little bit, we've talked a little bit with the the hockey association, they seem to be excited, I mean, one of the one of the first feedback track is, well, we'll get you a Zamboni for the site too.
Oh, okay.
Now we gotta, now we gotta, now we gotta put a shed door in Zamboni with it, anyway, um, we we do have uh on the, it's a very important issue, one of the things we would have to work out with them in in their fundraising is, um and we have a similar model with Orno um baseball association where, you know, the the Beeter Wood baseball field and the um Hackberry uh T-ball fields, um those were built jointly between the city and the baseball association and and those portions of those parks are maintained, you know, jointly, we've done grants, just as last year did a grant, a joint grant with the baseball association for some uh, you know, maintenance equipment, and so there's a, there's an agreement from like the start in the seventies, and I think they re-did it in the nineties, that specifically talks about, you know, you have dedicate, you, association will have dedicated use in these time periods on on these times and, you know, and you will help us maintain it and we will.
And on the maintenance side, how does that work, because there's clearly, I mean, it's only a couple months a year, but there's maintenance required here, it's gonna cost money and it's staff time from the association or the city or both.
Yep, the biggest, the biggest, uh I was asked that question last week by somebody as well, the initial, you know, the the facilities maintenance, you know, with that that concrete or that asphalt uh will will require a work every, you know, fifteen years or so, the biggest thing I see for the city in a maintenance cost in, you know, like an annual routine maintenance, is uh just our internal um workforce doing ice uh maintenance, which is kind of what takes up part of our hundred now, um that said, we've recently up-staffed, so it's just a matter of moving those assets to those things. The other good news is with the baseball association or with the hockey association, you know, we have a kind of partnership right now down in Casco where, um you know, they they come and help clear the ice, they help put the boards up, take the boards down, um you know, same thing happens at our baseball fields, uh baseball association does all the infield maintenance, we sometimes help them with, you know, a skid steer or something, help move some ageline around or whatever, but.
Will these boards go, be put up and taken down?
I think we were, again, not detailed design, but the idea that some of the other models we've seen of this kind of shared uses, you know, they would, they would stay year, they'd be year-round, they'd be far enough, they're supposed to be far enough back so they don't impede the, and they'd be integrated into probably a fencing system, you know, so uh for the pickleballs not to go flying out in the park line.
Does Old Mike have any photos of something like this that exists, you can see it, like an actual photo?
We've, we've, we've seen some, there's, there's a place in Northern Minnesota, I can't remember, I wanna say Alexandria, but it's.
Could you, could you send that around?
Yeah, if I find it again, for sure.
I actually took my kids up on the North Shore skating two years ago, it was pickleball, but it was the same kind of deal, um and but they had done this where they had the fences and everything up, but it was a, I think, three basketball courts, um so same kind of idea, but just looking at it, you can tell that.
So is the fence for like the pickleball, is that like an overlay, you know, but is it like, like on top of hockey boards? So it's like an extension of the hockey board?
Yeah, I would imagine something like that.
I think for safety too, of course, so we have to have something a little more elevated than just the boards and stuff.
Yes, for golf balls, yeah.
What, um, what is so far, if you open ask, I mean, what so far has been the neighborhood?
Uh, most of, uh staff little questions. Uh, and then there's been some.
I know we have three of the closest neighbors.
Yeah, no, and we've had some some questions, you know, people like, uh, there was a rumor going around that we were planning to shut down the golf course and create a pickleball stadium. And I'm like, well, no, this is actually in, you know, part of the criteria of looking at this concept, this feasibility was, it couldn't impact golf. So uh we've had some of that, so I know we've had some interactions with the, yeah, with some of the.
Golfers have been concerned?
Yep, we've got feedback from some golfers.
What about neighbors?
Um, just, I think, mostly I heard through Sandy or last uh meeting about uh concerns about noise.
Noise, okay.
Um, traffic.
Traffic.
I've got concerns, I mean, I've, people have asked me candidly on the negative side, like, you know, what is it, the, you know, pickleball is noisy, just kind of those things, traffic, all that stuff, and I I honestly, I'm, I don't think people really underst- know what's being proposed yet, and so we're going through this process and I'm too stable, bring people up to speed, I don't think people really, you know.
It's normal to react, but.
Yeah, I don't think people have fully seen that sun on the table yet, so.
And that's, that's the reason to have the open houses and have the public engagement is to socialize the ideas.
Well, and one of the goals for those open houses is to go from, you know, sort of a morphous concept of sound to, well, how loud is it at five hundred feet?
And I think when matters a lot too.
Right, so so putting some measures on things rather than the very general that we've been at, um so we've done a little bit of research around some levels and distance to different things and what it's compared to, so that it becomes a little bit more, something people can relate to.
Yeah.
And and the other thing that you hear concerns about is this a fit to whatever the the plan is, the master plan of the park is, and you might announce that so far as well, yeah, it fits right in with what we said we were gonna do in the comp plan uh for the golf course and what we've been, at least since I've been in the city, been looking at is like, how do we make sure that's a viable park, um you know, facility going out into the future for the community, and so, you know, we've done business studies, looking at winter activities and all that, so there's, there's a potential happy marriage there for all that kind of stuff, some of that has, because we're still in the very early stages, that hasn't been, you know, communicated or put together in any kind of public affairs type thing.
It's important to be mindful through all this is how it's gonna impact the golf course uh as a business unit, you know, we've been in in the last twenty years, most of those have been in the red, we've been back through COVID, golf course is now making some money again, which is great, but just wanna make sure we're not taking away from the experience on the golf course side to the point where it's gonna tip things back in the red, now we're subsidizing it, we have to pass.
And Lafayette does pickleball right adjacent to its golf as well, so it's not unprecedented on our.
How many, how many courts do they have, Buckhead?
I'm not certain, I thought it was four, but it could be more.
Yeah, I've, uh, what do you, I think they have eight.
Is it that many?
Well, they're, they're just portable nets that they bring out to the test, so.
They use them all. I mean, I.
Was that, it was double, they have three, I think they brought up to six too, which is right there, below those.
I mean, I live next door, where this is located, my particular house, I don't think noise would affect me personally that much, because it's around the corner, but I could see people on the other side of that hill, for example, caring about that concern, um parking is gonna be a problem.
Definitely golfers, noise to the golfers.
Right.
That's probably.
Well, that's.
I'm another country club, um, I think parking's still a problem, I'm not su- I'm not sure, if this all gets used like it should, it it seems adequate most of the time and like, but like at certain times, it'll probably be a problem.
The uh, you know, the, the rule of thumb for building any facility, recreation facility is you have, no matter how much parking you plan, you never have enough, um you'll always end up expanding, so, yeah, uh, yeah, it would depend, I mean, I guess there are, there are some future expansion opportunities for that, like lower parking lot, um.
When twenty spots.
Again, it's it's a matter of cost, I mean.
Yeah, and the twenty spots is enough to support five courts.
Sure.
Um, you know, you're talking about those peak times, which I don't think are going to be pickleball times, so I'm not, I'm not hugely concerned about the parking.
I'd be better than that, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you're concerned about the peak times and the the traffic and noise, you know, one way to remedy it is to limit parking, so people can't, oh.
I I, and just from the traffic standpoint, I mean, this is, Orno Road is way underutilized, it's, it's a nine-ton design, uh it's designed for three or four times its current. It's current.
Add this to the law, but what happened with, where are we with the Crest Country ski trail?
Let's talk about that, let's can tell about that.
People are other Crest Country, I'll be here in a week, yeah.
Alright, so wrapping up this topic? I think, sorry, one last question, it's from a, from a functionality for pickleball, so I see five courts here and limited on expansion, um, I mean.
Um, I mean, if you could think of the, the perfect pickleball setup, I mean, how many, how many courts is that? Is expansion important? You know, it's a big investment and I'm thinking like, could you foresee a pickleball event of some sort? You know, where you, where you're trying to get a bunch of people together, have a little party and you, you want going with twenty stalls.
Oh, well, no, I don't think that that would necessarily be necessary, um, because when you do an event like that, with those guys, what you do is you'll have, you'll have, let's say you do doubles in the morning and you do doubles women's in the morning and you do doubles men's in the afternoon. And you do, you know, mixed doubles at a different time. So, that's plenty of courts. So, by, by example, at West Tonka Activity Center, they do a big pickleball class like every fall. They have nine courts, okay? And those nine courts, um, support like two hundred participants. So that's a lot of, that's way more than I would think you'd wanna do in something like this. I don't think you'd wanna do something that big here, okay? So, I mean, I think you could do something, but I would generally speaking, think of it as more of a community event, whereas they're drawing from, the people come from Lhasa, Wisconsin for their tournament, can't imagine why. Um, but, you know, they're drawing from Bloomington and Plymouth and a lot of different places because they advertise very broadly. I think I see this more as a community resource. I don't see it as that kind of a thing. Yeah, um, but you could, you know, with that many courts, you could certainly do something.
There's some other.
I mean, you could have forty people, so if you think about it, you've got five courts, that's twenty people playing simultaneously, right? So if a group of players rotates off, when you're doing a tournament, you get another, you've got forty people you can support simultaneously in a single, you know, phase of the event, and then later you could do something else. So you can support a lot of people with that many.
Is there a, it probably just varies when you're trying to accomplish the whole, is there, is there a, like, kind of a sweet spot number? Like a course, like when, going into this right now, you think it'd be, you know, two is too, too few because you need a critical mass. Eight, because maybe by not wanting to choose, what's, what's ideal?
Yeah, um, you know, I think most people think six is ideal, okay, as a drop-in sport. But I think five is completely adequate to draw people. So the key is, you leave your house, you expect to show up and somebody's gonna be there. If you only had two courts, people show up with their four players, they're gonna play it and they're gonna own the court and then they're gonna leave. That's not pickleball, that's tennis, right? That's why tennis courts just don't get used. Um, so, you know, four, you could do it, five is just a better number, you know? Um, and, and I will just tell you, I mean, at, at West Tonka, any day of the week, whether you're outside on the tennis courts or you're indoors, you've got six nets going and then a lot of days it's nine nets going. But like I said, they're drawing from a, a pretty wide area.
Yeah, I think, again, the goal is not to create destination pickleball to solve this pickleball demand. I mean, we are, you know, we're one community, but there are other communities out there that are currently talking about adding pickleball to their community, to their areas too. And so it's, it's the intent here, I think, you know, I'm not talking, you know, I think, um, on behalf of the committee here, is that it's supposed to be kind of a neighborhood type of amenity, you know, I mean, neighborhood plus, right?
It sure seems like the next three years, the number of pickleball courts around is gonna be, it's gonna quite droop on there. You could pretend to pick up a paper, they're talking about building a new pickleball.
True, but you're also gonna see every community adding some. So if you look at the, the pace of pickleball, if you had six courts, that'd be enough to support the current demand for all of Oregon, based on the population. So, you know, if you were to build more than that, it would be because you were trying to draw from other areas. And as other communities out there, there's gonna be, I think, plenty.
So your question about holding events, I mean, I don't think that the goal is to be able to have events here. If you're gonna have an event, you're gonna go to a bigger facility with the parking queue, you know.
So the goal is basically is to satisfy the community demand and just kind of maintain that.
In my mind, this is the Orono Golf Course version of pickleball, right? Here, it's not, we're not trying to build the Hazelwood or Hazelteen, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And I, I mean, I think it's nice, I'm a golfer, but I've golfed at Orono Golf Course once. Because I prefer to go Baker. There's nothing that draws me in that direction. If I go over there to play golf, I mean, play pickleball and I'm there kind of regularly, guess what? I'm used to doing that road trip. I know people who are there, we say, let's meet up at four. So I do think it's gonna be good for the golf course, um, in the sense that there's a lot of people who go to Baker, right? Or go other places to golf that just don't think to come to Oregon. Um, so I think it's gonna be good exposure in that regard. Um, but, you know, in terms of visibility, it's not right in the middle of town where everybody's driving by and seeing it and saying, oh, let's go play pickleball there, right? It's gonna be a word amount, thing among the players.
And that's what I was saying earlier about kind of the style of, you know, let's make sure that this aligns with the style. That's important to me, and I think that, I think that we're, we're heading that way, but I think that there's a lot more work to do to make sure that if we do, if we move forward with this, that this really is an Orono type of approach to pickleball.
And I'll tell you this, cause we see this at, at the community center. If people are waiting to play, they're just gonna go somewhere else next week. So it is self-limiting, cause you don't wanna come to play and be sitting out for fifteen minutes every time you finish a game. You, you wanna be rotating in. So it'll, 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 it'll peak where people will find out about it and they'll come. And then they'll say, yeah, you know, that level of play is really community play. I'm looking to play with the four-pointers. They're gonna go out to Loane, they're not gonna play here, right? This is gonna, in my opinion, be that community play, that entry level, family play, um, where you've got multiple levels interacting. So I think in that regard, that's where it's gonna be self-limiting, because people are looking for a certain type of play and you won't get that high level of play by words. You're gonna get community play.
While they're waiting, they're gonna get a thirty dollar hot dog.
A thirty dollar.
See, this is all coming around.
Cross country skiing.
All right, moving on, next topic.
I'm gonna go.
All right. Is it snowing out there again yet?
Not yet.
Well, it'll be back out at four AM. Um, did you see, did you see Jersey? Jersey, you know us. Did you see that? Which you said, Deborah, that you got followed in.
Unfortunately.
Um, off of, off of.
Nineteen, oh, it's a county.
But I don't know, I don't know.
She's, she's down by the bar.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a county.
It's a cloud and it's.
The driveway on the other side of the county or road or most people.
Yep.
All your stuff.
So I didn't mean to be rude by looking at my phone while we're talking, but I was trying to get the speed on some, whatever you call this here. All right, so, um, our annual exercise here, trying to give, give some direction and set up some, uh, uh, subgroups here. Josh can.
I put this together, uh, really just kind of based off of what we've been talking about this last year. Um, some of the assignments, uh, that we had on last year, such as some of each have been removed, because at this point it's more of a staff directive, uh, or next steps.
Yeah, so he took a stab at rolling this forward and including, and adding some things that we've talked about recently.
And we are not limited to this, so, as a park commission, if you have goals, this is the time to hit it off.
Yeah, and also this is not said and sold, and it's, I mean, anyone who's in business knows this, this is, this will, is it working as documented here?
We did have, um, pickleball and hockey at the, you know, in the community on the year last year, too, though, I think it's.
So I, I left that off.
I noticed.
So we, we kind of have achieved our goal in that, for that committee, where we got to the point where we determined some locations. Uh, and now we got the ball rolling, where now we're having open houses. Um, so this is, that's something that we can definitely add once we get to that next step, whatever that is. So we need to bring it to a formal meeting for park commission and then the city council for approval for any next steps. So that, that's why I left it off, um, for tonight.
All right, so for tonight's, let's focus on the first column, second column, third column. And less so on the fourth column, we got earlier the fifth column, so we can fill those in once we start here, so. Um, it's high level, uh, one of the things that we're, that we, uh, that's on your ra- radar for the year. This is, again, the way that I see this committee, you guys are all, I appreciate all of your contributions as a, as a volunteer and your contributions. As staff person, this is, you know, you guys are here because you have some particular interest. Um, and so this is where we try to get those out.
Casey, Casey's ruled out.
Casey has surfaced a little bit, um, recently as a, yeah, I think you can keep on this kind of back and backup, but we don't need to.
Uh, I, I just ask, cause I know he's still in Crystal Bay Park and, uh, especially pickleball, uh, rolling down or being delivered. I would be interested in either Hackberry or Crystal Bay Park and thinking about.
Okay, so as far as while we're on the Crystal Bay Park, I think that that, I, I think that we should remove that from our radar for this year. Um, I think we pushed it out of the C, of the CIP anyways, did we?
Uh, we did, uh, to next year, so the idea, for our timeline, so the, the way that we're kind of looking at everything is like a three-year window for projects. So the first year would be master plan, second year design, third year implementation, so.
So we haven't, in your four years run out of them, is what we have it on the CIP for?
Yeah, if we're in the process of a master plan for Hackberry, I thought there might be some efficiencies to do Crystal Bay at the same time. Or at least to get us in that frame of mind where we're looking at, you know, for the streaming, what can we do at Crystal Bay that could be.
What do you guys think? I was, firstly, I was really jazzed up about Crystal Bay Park last year, and then other priorities just kind of overwhelmed that. I think there's a lot of potential for it, but I think there's a lot of work to, um, to do there. We did, we did a lot of, the playground here, I'm talking about.
The big one.
Big, we've got thousands of bikers coming through on this trail every year and this is the face that they see. This is the face of Orono right here, like how do we make this something that we're.
And there were supposed to be like improvements up Brown, right, too, and we were talking about crosswalks and stuff and, but that's why I think it's like important not to lose, you know, it on the radar that.
Yeah, it's just a matter of whether we have an appetite to, to sort of, you know, fight that off from this year or not.
Hackberry and, and Crystal Bay are two biggest projects coming up.
And that's no reason Hackberry is so far behind.
Um, so I, I would keep it on for this year, even if we have the committee need just to come up with some, generate some ideas for what that part could be.
So, uh, continue to refine long-range master plan for the park, it's kind of high level.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I think we should give Casey the option, because that's his neighborhood.
I did talk to Casey, he said he was fine staying on, maybe to fascinate or being removed if someone had no ideas.
Yeah, I think we, we give him the option, because we can always, we, we can put three people on there anyways, so. Anyone else have a specific interest in that one?
I would like it, there's not a neighbor near that.
Um, pencil you in? All right, so, kind of, sorry, you want me to just go from top down or is anyone else?
Go ahead.
Jan and I bugging away, you know, tree lighting events and fundraising thing, I, that's fine.
Could I recommend maybe an additional member to this tree lighting event? Like, the way it's been growing the last two years, I'd like to see more commission, uh, involved. Involvement and, you know, let me broke me, cause it seems less.
Was it due as a success?
It was, it was a cool. We had a good turnout this way.
Yeah, I showed up late, it was great.
Was windy.
Yeah.
Um, so, again, we've got, uh, Rick, Jersey, and Jan missing today. Right, and, and it's Casey. But, okay, so, is anyone who want to volunteer? I can only volunteer once for that, so.
Well, I'm just, I'm sitting back, because if we are gonna do fundraising, that's gonna take a lot of time for the pickleball, so I just don't wanna over commit. So I'm just sort of, you know, continuing to learn about the parks.
Sandy with the, with the, with the address.
What, on the?
Uh, in a promise that.
On the, on the lighting of the trees?
Yeah.
Would you like to donate to our pickleball class and our tree lighting class? See, it just says, come on. Ah, just, ah, come on.
All right.
Tended a little way.
Tended with a T.
You can always remove it.
A T.
Uh, trails?
I think Rick and Jersey cut that down.
If we can't, can't, uh, plug in the continuing and all of it, maybe add an alternate capacity.
I, I love, I, 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 I just don't have the.
Miller's fine.
I care, I just don't.
While we're on that, you mentioned cross country skiing, Brian?
Yes.
You got, you got said to.
Uh, yeah, that's the goal for that.
The, the, the school reached out, they were going to use it in like last week or two, and then they went and then saw that the parking lot was closed and they were kind of misunderstood what that meant. So I think we just need to get back to them.
Yeah, so parking lots, so everyone knows, uh, on the weekends, we would plow the lower lot, which is the other lot for sliding, uh, and then directly through the lower lot. We, what we talked about for this last year was that the school would help groom trails or provide something that, that could groom the trails and then market somehow. That never happened this year, and I think that's where it's still lacking with the school is that we're willing to host them and let's do this, why don't you set up for them?
So it's really on the school right now, just they need to, this, this is the, so.
Is there a point at which we do it ourselves?
We have to get something to bring the trails with, which we don't have on the CIP at this point.
Is that also for the schools or do they have?
So we have a roller, um, and they would bring a snowmobile.
Is there a reason why they didn't engage this year? Did they say why?
It says, okay, so, it says, Orono didn't really ski at the Orono Golf Course this season for variety of reasons. Baker is very good, as soon as, um, there's enough snow. We also skied on Long Lake this year when it was groomed. Someone that lives in the lake used the Orono groomer to set the trail, mountain skied at the trails at their school. I think that for the golf course to be used, it needs to be groomed on a regular basis and that the trail, uh, works for those that ski there. Baker did a fantastic job this year.
Athlete, for it to be used, we'd provide it.
I think skiing at the golf course could work, it just needs a person to drive the grooming. I think, yeah.
And I, I love that idea, I think the more natural uses for the golf course, the better.
Is there demand for cross country skiing?
Good question.
Well, it's probably like a lot of things. It's an awareness raising.
Yeah.
If it's there, they'll come. You know, those two gentlemen who we saw, I mean, they absolutely loved it, right? They thought it was beautiful and, you know, had a lot of good things to say about it, so, you know, I think it's, I think it's conducive, meaning it's the right environment for it. But, you know, it has to be reliable and has to be advertised and all those kinds of things. But, you know, it has to be reliable and has to be advertised and all those kinds of things to do.
Maybe it would be similar to what we said about pickleball would be more of it, it's the local community use rather than competitive school, you know, whatever, but it'd be just.
But what does it cost to maintain it?
Yeah, right.
Staff time and then just the piece of equipment.
I think reliable was good, more than used, I think that's what they're looking for, that's what they get with Baker. They can go out there and know that it's, it's ready for them. So if we're willing to make that commitment, I think that, alright, that's an operation question.
Be interesting to see what did ballpark, what that would have caused, would have caused, maybe some equipment that they can get at a CND event. Put it for a year and like try it, you know?
But so at North Oaks, we, we had a UTV and we bought tracks for it and I think they cost me eight thousand dollars for the tracks and we built our own groomer. Took us about an hour to groom the trail, so it's not a huge investment.
What did the?
They used to do it.
Did they?
Uh, yeah.
They used to groom?
They used to groom trails over there, there's a groomer at Gear West.
Okay.
His name's on the, you can, you know, I don't know how much it is or anything, but.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask is.
He goes, he doesn't. It's like a guy that you pay and he doesn't do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, really?
Well, they would certainly have all the connections over there.
They used to come, they used to come out, there used to be groomed trails that were lighted and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would use this.
So that's what I was gonna ask, is in the email, he refers to the Orno groomer, what does that mean?
Could it be the school or?
Maybe it's just in the school.
Or Gear West.
Yeah, so does the school have equipment?
I, I'm assuming so.
Yeah.
Maybe just a snowmobile, we do have the roller, like you said, but that's it.
So I think maybe you, maybe you should follow up with them, uh, you know, before you do the email, like, I'm sure that, that Gear West, you know, would have an interest in helping us solve any problems we have too.
I don't know, I really don't have a sense of demand, but it seems one of the lower cost ways to enhance the winter outfits there. It's a very easy way and without doing a lot of cost or a lot of changes. And so if it's used, it's used, you keep doing it, if it's not, then you don't, but.
I think it's worth giving it a shot, it's one or every other.
Plenty of snow, so.
Right.
Another maybe, maybe a step would be just to mark a trail for snowshoe.
That's a good point too.
We're maintaining it, we're just marking it.
Alright, well, can you connect with Rick on that too?
Can you bring a snowmobile over to get rid of that?
Did you invite your shoulder?
There's a sign. I brought my mailbag.
Just straight out of the shop.
Alright, so, uh, trails, I think that, uh, so on their radar is this loose line decode trail and that's done, right? No, that's not, that would be a loose line, okay. Christmas, or Christmas cross-country ski trails and then, um, Lowry Connector is still on the radar. And, um, and then, uh, Jersey, she sent me, uh, she found someone at the county and a program they have that might find, make progress on, on, um, along nineteen. Okay. She, she really wants to put a trail along, or at least just mark it, yeah, paint it, right? From Navar South. So she said that there's some program that the city has that might help fund that. So I know that, so those are the four things on their radar there. Uh, golf course.
Yeah, so, um, I agree with these three main objectives for the year, you know, start thinking about a hundred year anniversary next year. We could probably just get together at some point here and start brainstorming on it, you know, probably a big celebration, but maybe we want other things happening too. It'd be cool to highlight the history of the course and all that and just, um, have fun about a series of events. Explore outside food options, I think this is something we really should try to do this year, just getting the stretch of the kitchen, thing is on hold for a while. Just seeing what that might look like and if we have to subsidize it once or twice, at least we know kind of what.
So staffs are already running with it, our plan is to do at least four food trucks this year.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we're looking at additional events where we have junior PGA events where maybe bringing Chick-fil-A or something, ice cream truck, something geared towards them. Um, so four is the goal with maybe a few additional special events.
Great.
Yeah, and then the, the rebranding, so you and I exchanged a few emails on this recently, um, looking at social media really first and also the website. But, you know, the new Facebook page, Instagram, um, I know Kim's working on apparel, start to roll out the logo. There'll be a lot of other things with that, but that's, I think competing that by the following numbers is a good goal.
I'm gonna jump over Hackberry real quick, let me go back. Lake access points, where is that?
We just like ten this year that we're in a, that we marked or in the process of marking, we approached, you know, like Alyssa approached us about another one. On West Arms, so it's just looking at them throughout the years, visiting them, talking about neighbors are taking them down, where we're at, identifying different accesses, it's just winter access.
Do you think we need to, still have that as a focus?
Probably doesn't necessarily need to be a focus.
I would say though, the ones that we just marked this year, the only thing that they're marked for is pedestrian use only. And some of those lake access points have other uses, so I would say as a group, it would be good if they could sit down and at least identify what those uses are. And maybe it is all just pedestrian use, but for you to say definitively, this is what it is.
And that has like eighty years of history of what the city has voted on, like what, what's agreed upon use is, how, or stuff like that. So even just formalizing that from bringing it to the city council will look like.
So that's your number two here, right?
It is.
Okay, alright, so I guess you go.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Lerton Dog Park, parking lot expansion specifically, as we're more and more of a need.
That's the biggest problem. You know, another, um, I don't know if we've talked about this before, is that we explore the idea of, um, day pass purchase. Cause that's, that's a problem sometimes for my friends or like my wife goes, a friend meets her, they don't live here and they come once a year, twice a year and they just want to pay that day. To, to have a permit, but they're not gonna buy a year because it's too inconvenient.
Still don't understand why we don't just have a box, a little form and the envelope to blow it, pull it out, push money and you drop it in a box and still.
Well, we, we do have the box with the application, yeah. All they would need to do is they go, they park, they fill it out and then at some point they mail it back to the city or whatever. The day pass we've talked about, but, but passes are increased, they, they've already increased for this year.
So I would add a second goal here, which is to talk about either automating or using technology or, you know, making, like reviewing the process of how we collect money for whatever we offer there.
I think, yeah, it's not that great at the moment, you know, dividing the pass is slightly convenient, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it should be something you can do through an app on your phone.
Yeah, since you don't want to spend a hundred grand to collect dog fees.
No.
There's got to be existing apps that you can.
I believe you can pay online.
Yeah, so we should just review that, that fee collection process.
And maybe part of it has to do with the signage and how clear it is, that it's promoting that.
I don't know, I did go there after all these meetings, it's very clear, like you're supposed to pay, like that is put the passes forward, like it's in your.
And we have staff there too, constantly reminding people.
Didn't we get any increase in compliance? I mean, after we talked about it all so long?
Not really, it's, because of our city code, it is a misdemeanor, so if we have the police enforce it, which seems pretty heavy-handed for a parking pass. So we are rewriting portions of city code or reviewing city code where that would become an administrative fee, um, or administrative bond.
I just think silly that we're adding parking to be a greater enabler.
We can just, I think Gabe won't open unless you have their ID tag that appears about parking, you know that the people who are there have paid, you know, or something like that.
Well, I think my biggest issue right now is it's not enough parking spots generally, whether to pay or not, open too many people.
So the idea was this year we increased, uh, the, the prices for the parking passes and maybe that clears some of it up, we have to see.
And also the parking lot expansion.
What do you mean by staff initiative here?
What do you see that?
The, uh, the queue.
Oh, just, I mean, I don't know if we need a committee for that, why couldn't they have one, but really at this point.
I think for sure, I think there's enough there to do. If, if we have an interest.
Is anybody go, I mean, I used to pretend to do that, but I don't, I can't, I guess do that now, so. I don't want to do anything anyway.
So stay on.
I'll check.
Really, I'm just happy to get a feedback from the park commission as it comes, because now we've also had city council involved with this as well, where they're getting some of those complaints, so. Not that I'm trying to take things away from you, just go, at this point.
I think there needs to be more to it than just maintaining or, or solving problems, used to be like, the park is new or we can't offend or new ideas or, but now it's kind of just.
Let's, let's leave a question right there right now, I'll see if Rick, Jersey, Jan. Alright, let me come back to Hackberry, which Gordian and I are on. We've talked about a related, um, problem or related role for us, which is, which I wanted to open up to the group, which is this. I'm, I'm hearing more and more issues with the coordination of the scheduling of fields that are both, um, Orno fields, Orno city fields, other city fields. There's the, they're starting to get ugly between various parties involved in that process. So there's, there's schools, there's cities, there's youth organizations and they're all starting to battle. And I think that we have, we tripped upon this when we started talking about Hackberry with some of them. I think that there could be a role for us to try and resolve this and better, and I think that that would be another focus, that would be outside of Hackberry, but would be somehow related. If we wanted to poke our nose into that, we think that that's not our role and we don't need to do that either.
Yeah, I, I think we need to try to just advance it, um, this year with some master planning efforts to, to at least advance the conversation we've had with the soccer, lacrosse, the flag football, baseball. Got to understand that we're probably not gonna be able to make everybody totally happy, yeah, we want to try to make as many people happy as possible. And, um, and then hopefully that will clear out what's possible for, from a scheduling standpoint down the road, this is gonna happen for three years, but if we locked in on a plan that, gave each of them something that they could kind of count on down the road, that might, they can feel like there's something helping them, but.
Alright, I'll leave that off.
Sticking it in there, I think exposure though, like, I'm not saying, I think you should be aware of all the scheduling conflicts, and I should be able to solve it.
Um, I'll leave that off until I can recruit someone who has a specific interest and helps solve that.
I think, I wouldn't want to get too far, I'm aware of knowing, you know, I'm betting what we even can deliver there as far as.
Yeah.
What's compatible, you know, is the different, with the seasonality of the different sports and.
I'm not, yeah, I just, there needs to be, uh, yeah, I'm not saying that we propose a system to fix it, but that we try to encourage better cooperation.
Is it, is it that, do, do these resources go unused a significant portion of the time, is it, and everybody wants to use them at the same time? And then they stumble on each other just because they don't know when it's available, I mean, is it, is it an availability or is it simply a communication thing where they just?
It's both, but it's, you know, they do.
You know, we observed these areas and said, you know, here's a sample of days and here's how it was used. Have we actually observed the use of these particular parks to know what the usage actually is?
No, I'm just hearing anecdote.
I mean, maybe that would be a good thing to try to do this summer, is to, I mean, is, you know, is, is to divide up parks and take particular days that, you know, we're monitoring particular parks and then just keeping track of how it's being used? You know, because I, I feel like a lot of times we're working off of anecdote. And, you know, is it an off-handed thing, is it a thing that happens once every six weeks? You know, like, the facility that I use, you know, there's this big thing, my house has to be maintained available for the community. We call open court, empty court, because it's available, but nobody walks in, right? And, and so we're always in this quandary about why is there this demand for this open available space that nobody actually uses? When there's a whole bunch of people over here wanting to use it, so I'm, I'm using that simply is because that's influencing my mind when you're talking about people having conflicts. And how we actually observe the usage of the parks that we want to do master plans around by saying, what is the usage? Who's showing up, how many people are showing up, what times of days are they showing up? If we don't know that, I think it's hard to find.
For this year, as we're getting into kind of the, just forming our thoughts about what it could be, I think that's really important, like for the summer, spring and fall, we should have a good handle on.
Yeah.
Between soccer, flag football, baseball and.
Softball.
Softball.
I mean, could that be one of our projects, is to divide up the parks and say, over some period of time, you'll observe the usage and document it and then we'll aggregate that information somewhere. I mean, we'd have to think about how you do it in a thoughtful way that would be statistically valid, but.
So when we try to police, uh, reserved time that it doesn't get used?
No, not trying to police, but we, we use anecdote about people being upset without actually knowing what is the frequency of use. And therefore you can put the anecdote in context, you know, how much do we observe our parks?
Playing football at Hackberry, you know that they're, like, they're using all those times, whether it may, I mean, you could, all, all four of those associations, I mean, you could get a good handle on how much they're actually using it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, and it's, the complication is it's not just about now, it's about, all of them are experiencing growth, almost all. Are experiencing significant growth in their programs and significant need for.
I just wonder, people always like the same time of day because it's always convenient to do between eight and ten, because your parents don't have any other plans between eight and ten. And that's why they try to schedule a lot of events between eight and ten, when it goes unused, whatever other time of day. And, and that's just my instinct telling me that you may have more capacity than you recognize, because people are defining capacity as a, as a very narrow time slot. And so I just think it's important to understand who's showing up and how often and how many people are showing up at these different parks. So that as you're trying to plan for additional resources or uses, you know, hey, the peak time use of this park is always between these hours, and so why is that? What does that say about how that park's being used? So I'm just saying it's important to understand a little bit more beyond, it seems to drive a lot of things, which is the anecdote, the loud voice, the complaints. And so I, I just suggest that might be a good thing to do, you know, with some of the parks is to, to do and, you know, just sit there for a day and observe what's going on in this park. what's going on in this park. It's it's, it takes time to do it, but we could divide them up and do something like that.
Okay. So I think we did all those on there. We did, we need to add golf course enhancements. Slash pickleballs.
We had talked about that's mostly done, like, other than listen to community and make recommendations.
Yeah, I think there's a lot that's a lot, yeah, so.
Wow, I mean.
So I think that.
It it there is, so you've got this, you've got this chicken and egg with that, right? You're saying we won't make a decision till we've done the fundraising, but we can't do the fundraising until we've made a decision and so I'm I'm not quite sure what we're committing to. Are we committing to doing fundraising? With a contingency plan? And and that's the thing that goes on here right now, right? Because the other can't happen about that, but to not say we're gonna do fundraising, which is probably one of the most time consuming things we can do this year, seems silly to not put that on the plan. So I I I think we're a little, um, we're we're a little start and stop when it comes to the actions that we need to take on the pickleball piece and then time passes, right? So I think we do have to kind of draw a line in the sand and say, this, once we have the meetings, the next couple of meetings, which is this month.
Yeah.
What is the next step? And we're gonna, we're gonna go full forward with that step with with this as the contingencies based upon the outcome of what we get.
Yeah, I think.
So I think we have to make that decision pretty quick.
I think we need continually have a subcommittee for that.
Yeah.
So.
Having a subcommittee is a little different than making a decision that fundraising will start on February one. You know, with a goal of completing it no later than, I'm making this up, April thirtieth, and by that date we'll have achieved this. Or we don't go forward. That's my idea of a plan, right? You know, you gotta get to eighty percent of your funding by a very specific date or now you've just consciously said, we're not gonna get there in time for twenty five.
The fundraising piece is not Parks Commission. I think that there's overlap, but I think that fundraising happens outside of Parks Commission as well.
But I think it's enabled by the Parks Commission, so go forth and.
I agree, but I'm just hesitant about putting things on here that are up for involve people that are outside of the Parks Commission. But I think we need a, I think that.
It's pretty amorphous.
I think that the park, that the subcommittee, if it wants to be us, continue on this, is focus on what needs to happen to push this to a recommendation or not a reclamation that goes forward to the the city council and and feedback from the the fundraising activity could be part of that input.
Yeah, and that would, yeah. That's a good thing to clarify.
There's a little sap and so forth. Something about a coordination too between, you know, the hockey, so like making sure they're up to speed, they have an employee, they've got a secret table, they're up on the fundraiser and all that.
Neighborhoods and.
Neighborhood, there's like, I mean, there needs to be like a central, it's like a project manager for this whole thing, that's keep an eye on. Okay, we have the hockey funding, we have the we have the pickleball funding, we have the grant over here, okay, we have neighborhood input. That feels like there's a role for a subcommittee or somebody.
Yeah.
Keep an eye on all that.
And if if it doesn't go forward, then is there a plan B in that subcommittee needs to decide whether or not we love the others or not?
Fair enough.
I think you can remove lake access points because it's actually the backside focus area.
Yep, so this is, again, the lake access point is just a standing committee?
Yeah, no, yeah, I was saying you could just add me to the league commissioner next to Jan and I can work on this. If we don't streamline the front side.
Okay, so can we add something on pick the ball? Make up some purpose and put the three of us there unless someone else has idea or anything else to say about that. We'll we'll finalize this, fill out some of the milestones and so forth as we head towards our next meeting. And then adopt it, uh, next formally. This is the other piece of it is just the assignments.
So this, the league commissioner of the parks is just, if there's an issue at the park, residents know who to reach out to, be the first point of contact. So we have Alisa and Casey. Again, Kate.
He said term.
Next one.
Did you see me on my hand movies twice?
Yeah.
I don't remember that part.
Moving. His, his, uh, your term is up, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
So thank you for.
Just trying to see it through, but I just really don't have the time to do a practice.
Okay. I have a few more.
Contributing so little, it's not fair.
Do you want to volunteer for the yellows?
Yeah.
Yes.
But to a chance of a yellow.
Correct, yes. Can I take Castle Point Park and Demar Creek?
Yep. Castle Point Park?
Yes, unless I wanna give me the right to.
You want the right to?
Okay. I didn't see your name enough on the front side, so.
You are, I wanna take Antoine since.
Yeah, I just need a better orientation to some of these parks, cause
Perfect.
I just don't have any familiarity with any.
I'm happy to go around any parks, yeah.
Yeah.
And you told her, he looks kinda.
Where?
That's.
Okay, here's the point.
Yeah. Which one are you saying is vagrates?
Any one.
Oh, okay. I could do that one.
You wouldn't pay Crystal Bay to?
Cameron? Um, I can take Crystal, sure, yeah.
I'll take Lurton.
I can take the donation garden.
Yeah, it's working with Jamie, hopefully. You sure you won't sign that?
Well, if I'm working with, you said it was, you were the first one.
She's, she's a sneak back here.
Hmm?
I'm making fun of you over here, you're not even listening.
My daughter, they were, um, I went to pick her up at the airport and I was waiting for her call, I came back without her.
Oh, no.
Uh, you're taking your donation garden?
I'll take the donation.
What did you say about him, Brian?
I'm gonna take the donation yours.
Oh, yeah, why is it?
You have to check, check the film.
So, if you have any issues, donation garden, say anything. Oh, okay. Come visit us.
You're probably not busy there right now.
Okay, we have Seven Nations and French Creek Park.
I'm happy to take.
You wanna do, where where is French Creek, Chris, or?
Um, right on on OCD, um, closer to Marshall. It's tucked in.
Pretty sure it's made up, but.
I think we, I think we take Jersey off of Hackberry, we don't need to put on that, and put her on one of those two. Whichever one.
What? Are you adding yourself to one of them?
I.
French Creek, I don't know. I'm reluctant, but I I will do it.
Seven Nations is close to your ups.
Okay.
You know where that is off of Water?
Okay, no, no, Seven Nations. You'll put me on that one.
It's not clear that Brian and I are in the same neighborhood, so you could all ones that are close, and can, I think.
Oh, yeah, I got it, sorry. Seven Nations is on Watertown, right?
Yes.
Ryan, I can take Saga away from you.
If you want.
Sure.
So that just leaves French Creek, great.
So then Miss Livingston?
Um, Jersey.
Oh, sorry, Livingston, I gotta do.
She's, Jersey for Livingston?
I thought you put her on French.
No, French Creek, sorry. He was asking about Livingston.
Oh.
Where's that?
Brian, you just gave it.
Saga Park right now.
I'm putting, I'm doing Livingston, I like to go eat my DQ there with my kids.
Hello?
Okay, great. Um, I'm clear or awful trails.
Put in.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Cover cover your tracks pretty quick.
And then you can add me to the.
Okay.
Cameron, you have too many here or not?
No.
You're high with two.
I was sad that I only had Highwood for my first year, so I'm good to expand my horizons.
Can I ask you something about the lake access? So I was curious about it, so I walked down, you know, the end of Isaga Hill and just to see kind of what that looked like. And all I saw was a concrete barrier, there was no sign or anything. I thought that was one of the ones that you said you had marked, you were marking.
Saga and where?
On Forest Lake Landing, next to Lori Line.
Yep.
That was one of the ones, it's just basic recognizing, that was the one of the ones that you said you were marking, so I walked down there because I was curious what what it would look like.
Yep.
And I didn't see anything identifiable, so I was confused.
So what it should be is a four by four gray wooden post with a plastic sign on it.
Yeah.
Shows the park designation, so.
Okay, so it's not marked.
What's that?
So that one's not marked.
That one is not marked because someone in the neighborhood kept removing that post. So then we took a steel pipe and buried it into the ground as far down as we could and then filled it with concrete.
You told me that.
And painted it gray. So at some point we'll have to figure out some type of bracket mark where we can attach metal signs to it.
Okay, cause yeah, I saw the post and I thought, is the post, yeah, but there's, yeah.
They're much more attractive when they're stolen.
They're much more visible.
Okay, that that's why I was just a little confused, cause you had mentioned I walked down.
Okay, a lot of these lake access points, they're contentious because they have almost an extension of someone's property is the way they view it. So they all like that idea that anyone can come and walk down with a lady.
Yeah. No, no. Say another quarter.
Do you want to pay Howard?
Feel like you're old? Yes, sir, great, all yours.
You you have six, no, so.
Great.
Everybody's down to five.
Great. We should move people rotate every year or something like, it's good for us to all get out there and see the different parks we have.
I agree.
It's not a bad idea.
All right. Anything else?
I'll update this and send it out to you.
You, you.
Is that posted online? Is that what people know when they call the city?
I believe it is posted on Twitter, yeah.
Website or?
On the website.
Can I ask you guys a question?
Okay.
What happened to Spring Hill's trail that was supposed to be maintained as a park trail? Next to Remsalon Spring Hill Golf Course, it was one of the conditions that they let them build that. It's all overgrown, the fence is falling down.
Isn't that Medina?
Um, it's on the other side of Long Lake.
So it's.
It's in or no?
It's on, uh,
It's on the way, it's on the north side of the lake.
Yeah, and so it's on the south side of of Six.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
I think that just got lost and, uh, never got maintained and I don't know, Spring Hill was supposed to maintain it as part of the condition for the golf course.
Good question. What does it, does it connect to anything?
Well, it would connect to the trail now that goes around. Long Lake, it's just, it's kind of a nature walk that's just set in from the road. So they have like split rail fencing and then another one. I mean, at by now, I mean, how many years is Spring Hill been there? By now it's pretty overgrown and none, I don't think it was ever maintained. I'm sure they would rather it wasn't there.
So it goes along the road, Spring Hill Road, from from East Long Lake Trail west.
Going west, yeah.
I didn't know that.
I can look into it. I mean, I just always wondered about that.
East Long Lake Trail is gone here.
Do you want it on there?
Oh, the, uh. Neither is Summit.
Oh, yeah. Summit, East Long Lake is just an extension.
Slash, so. Well, let's make sure Jan goes that. All right. Anything else?
Is this your last meeting? We have a little bit, we have one more?
It's all the weather.
Yeah, ladies. If I didn't get on your driveway.
Have to go back to the airport tonight?
I don't know what they're gonna do, they're coming from Paris and then they got, were circling Minneapolis and I was at the airport and then they diverted them to Michigan.
Oh.
To Detroit.
Oh, no.
But they're coming from Africa, so they've been on their.
Oh, my God.
You might help.
No, oh, God, I think that's so bad.
What were they doing in Africa? It used to be different.
Ken's, her husband's sister, when she's already, she's traveling. For her, she got a guy, she would, she would. So, the train's been over there earlier before they break when they got out of town and they ran a little.
Is it a term?
Sanzabar.
Oh, wow.